So, welcome to the Town of Long Beach Town Council meeting of May 11. Let's all do the pledge of allegiance. Allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Invisible liberty and justice.
Cool. Good thing we're not singing because that would have really sounded bad. Okay, so we need to approve the town council meeting minutes. First is April 13. And I think that's the one I had a amendment to, correction. On it, under new business, we discussed the executive order. And it said that a mandatory 14 day quarantine for out of town, specifically hotspots Illinois, New York, and Florida. It should have said a mandatory 14 day quarantine for out of state residents returning to Long Beach. So I'd make a motion to make that amendment. Do I hear a second?
Second, Coker.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Alright, so then a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Do I hear a motion?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Coker, second.
Do I hear a second?
Coker.
Yeah, I hear amendment. Do I hear a second? Or a motion? Do I hear a second?
I'll second it, Coker.
Okay, who made the, who made the, the motion?
Well.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright. And then a motion to approve the minutes of the special town council budget conference of April 20th. Of 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve them.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Yeah, go ahead.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opening remarks. I have none. Police Department report, Chief.
For the month of April, we had 94 dispatch calls, zero walk-ins, drove 2,973.8 miles.
You just grabbed me.
Traffic stops, there was five, five warnings. Five suspicious subjects were checked, three suspicious vehicles, four courtesy services, seven ordinance violations were checked. 10 alarms for the month, one crash report. Report side, our hours worked was 360. There was no overtime. Part-time officers didn't work any hours and reserves didn't work any hours. There was one supplemental report to MCPD for a suicide criminal mischief report at stop 18. Pretty quiet month.
Any questions? Police Commission report, Nick.
Yeah, this report's from our meeting last week on Wednesday, May 6. One of the items we had, one of the items that we discussed, which is on tonight's agenda, under new business is regarding the follows annual pay increase for officer sites. We'll touch, so we'll address that matter when we reach that point. We talked about at the December 2019 meeting, at the end of the year, the last council meeting, there was a decision regarding compensation for town employees and Chief Sokowski has requested through the commission, for the commission, or excuse me, for the council to consider reversing its decision to change its pay increase from the 1.9% increase at the end of the year and make it to a 3% increase across the board. So maybe when we get to the HR committee reports, I'll ask some questions associated with that, with that request. Let's see. We had some discussion regarding policies for, for police employees regarding COVID-19 impacts, you know, if employees are affected, what's the, the game plan or next steps there? And, and Chief Sokowski indicated that, you know, if there is a confirmed positive case, that they do have backup plan for part-time employees to, to fill and escalate it. But they're exercising, you know, social distancing and all the other recommendations and cleaning alike. We discussed, uh, community member Rebecca Lipton's request regarding speed control measures along Moore Road. The commission discussed prior attempts and considerations of measures, including previously studies that were conducted in, in years past with the town. The chief had agreed to reach out to the Michigan City's traffic group who ultimately would need to approve of any potential speed or radar sign if that is the direction that the town would go. Options to potentially split those costs with Michigan City if that's something that they were agreeable to do. But first and foremost, you know, some sort of a traffic study would need to be indicated before putting in additional measures there. So that was a discussion item that will continue to the next meeting. Let's see, we talked, had some discussion regarding parking enforcement at stop 18 and the dams that was to stop. And also investigating reported dumping that's taking place during stop 26. And I think that completes my report. The next meeting is June 3 at 8:30 in the morning.
Any questions?
Two, two things to add to that, or actually three. I did some checking around the dumping at stop 26. The homeowner to the east advised that his contractor would not do that. I went and talked to the contractor last week while he was there and he said he wouldn't dump anything on the, in that line. The second thing is I've been in contact with Lieutenant Lenesky, or Captain Lenesky now, for doing a traffic study on Moore Road. That would be ongoing. And the third thing is the employee that was in question for the COVID-19 got test results this morning that are negative. So we're pretty happy about that.
Glad to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, volunteer fire department report.
Month of April, fire calls, we had five. About two actual fire calls, three false alarms. Medical calls for April, we had seven altogether. Heart attack, respiratory injury, and three lysisists. Response time on fire calls is right at six minutes and response time on medical calls is right at five minutes. The only other fire department report I'd make this evening would be that the guys were over there training. We did not train in March. Basically, actually, or April, just to, just to maintain the social distancing and all, but we're we're out there tonight training with, you know, social distancing in place, spread out, but we felt like we needed to shake the dust off. So we are out there training. If anybody asks any questions, that's what we're out there doing tonight, just to make sure we're not losing our our game. That's all I have on, on that report.
Any questions? Volunteer, sorry, Fire Commission report.
We did not meet. However, I've got a couple of things. We are proceeding with the additional design build quotation work with another contractor on the station. Basically, that's about all we've got going on. We may try to meet in May, we'll see.
Okay, any questions otherwise? Street Department report, Tom Delft. Tom, I didn't see you on there. I think I need to unmute you if I can find you.
He's 786.
Uh huh. Great. Thank you. Okay, Tom, you should be able to talk now.
Okay, for the month of April, the Moore Road drainage project, if it's in and it's almost complete. We have a few more minor little details finished up there. Leaf pickup was completed by Heelys. And that probably went the best that it's ever gone for spring pickup, especially since we were keeping track of loads. And over the years, I've been telling everybody that spring pickup is getting larger and larger. We ended up with a total cubic yards collected in one week of over 1,150 cubic yards this spring, but they, they managed to get all of that done in one week, which is a pretty big task. And other than that, we've been doing our normal routine activities, mowing, patching, sweeping, and catch basin cleaning and making sure that Mr. Wall doesn't have any extra time with some little minor issues that we have going on. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? Otherwise, Street Commission report, John Wall.
We actually did not meet formally as a street commission, although there's been quite a bit of activity. As you were, we made you aware last time, the community grant project is proceeding after we gave, the town council gave approval. Hassan Behring is working on the final engineering on that project and the hope is to get the bids out in order to still have a July start with the contractor. So that's, that's where we stand on the community grant project. It is proceeding. We, we are going to meet with Jim Maurer next week on some drainage issues that may become a part of and/or be supplementary to the sewer project. We feel there's a few things that we need to address. There's some specific issues at stop 17. We've actually had some conversations with the homeowner about that particular situation, but there's a little bit of complications on some drainage issues that we hope to, at a minimum, review before the sewer project goes through. Jim Maurer advised me the other day on the phone that he thinks we will be able to pave Lake Shore Drive by the sewer project. And so we will get a whole paving project out of it after they're done with the sewers, which that's, that's good news. But again, we don't want to build in any, if we can help it, if we can afford to, we're going to try to correct the drainage issues such that we don't build them back in with the new paving.
Any questions? Park Board, John Coker.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, park board met in April, a virtual park board meeting, and they finalized the plans for stop 28 and stop 21. The meeting was very heavily attended over, I believe, over 40 of our citizens watched, which was good to see. And the park board received a lot of good input from the folks that were there, gave their opinion on different, different projects and different plans. Committee, park board plans to proceed with stop 28 improvements as soon as possible. And you're going to proceed with stop 21 when the erosion issues with Lake Shore Drive and the beach club owners are addressed. I assume we'll have a report on that, John, a little bit. The break pillar at the Lake Shore Drive in Ridgemore, which is stop 18, that's being repaired. And electrical will be added to match the other pillars with a light. And the revisions to stop 18, the benches and toters, those were completed. One issue remains, or a question they need for the board is that Tri-Chi is ready to resume at the community, community center adhering to social distancing guidelines on June 4th, per the approval of the town council and governor's orders. So I think they need some direction from us as to, if they're going to let, if we're going to let them go ahead with their June 4th to get, beginning with that program or postpone it a bit longer. So that's it.
I guess we, go ahead. I guess regarding the Tai Chi, why don't we take that up later when we discuss the executive order?
Okay. And the next item is the community center report. They did not have a meeting. They haven't had a meeting since February, so there's no reporting.
Okay. Water Board, Mary Lou.
Hi, we met virtual, I'm trying to get used to Zoom on April 27. We did not meet in March. So our last meeting was in February. The, an update on the, from Greg from the water department. They have been mapping the water main valves on Lake Shore Drive, preparing for when we do the sewers. And also, as required by IDEM, water audit is completed, waiting for it to be validated due in August. And I want to thank John Wall. He attended that meeting. And we got some good input from him. So the results indicate we have a pretty tight system. We have 2% to 3% water loss, which is extremely low. If you'll notice, if you're down by the town center, they installed a new fire hydrant at Foxdale and St. Lawrence. It still needs to be, we approved it at that meeting. Also, under old business, Laurel brought up that at one of the budget meetings, as you know, there's an ongoing thing that the town feels that the water department owes $51,000 to them. And it started back in 2008 when there was one bank account. Now, no money has left the town. It's just all on paper. So we had Carl Sender look at it at no cost yet and Baker Tilly. And it could cost $15,000 to look for $51,000. So I think it was at one of the budget meetings, Peter made a statement that why didn't we split it with the town, with the water department? So the water department asked me to bring that to the board tonight and see that. And I think John was, John, you were on with us when we were talking about that. So that's, when that comes up, if you want that to be under new business, we can talk about it then.
Or we can discuss it now.
Okay.
We can do it now. Yeah, I was on that meeting too and
Oh, that's right. You were. Okay.
And that seems like a reasonable alternative to me. It certainly does make a lot of sense to spend a lot of money. Because frankly, the money is all coming from the same place pretty much anyway, which is citizens of the town. So I guess I would make a motion to say, yeah, let's split the difference with the water department and put this thing to bed. So that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
We've just saved $15,000.
Can't beat that. No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Our next meeting will be on a Tuesday because Memorial Day is Monday and I'm assuming it'll still be a Zoom meeting. So we will, Deanna will help us and we'll put out a notice to that.
Hey, Mary Lou, this is Nick. Just a question here. Have you at all had any conversation at the water board regarding, you know, residents and, and having issues with bill payment or anything? I can't recall if the governor's order includes all utilities, including water, for example.
We're not shutting off any water. We haven't. And so, and no, we haven't. It, there is a group that there is always an issue, but it hasn't been because of the virus and we haven't, we haven't sent shut off notices. And I think we'll wait till this is over and most of them pay as they can. So we're working with them. But all in all, I, we did kind of a campaign on having ACH instead of having your bank pay it that and I think, I know Lynn is on here. I think we've had a nice increase because if you, if you, what you think of is people know that it's now due by the end of the month. So there's like 800 checks and probably 500 come in that last week and it's kind of overwhelming. And you want to make sure they get paid. And the other thing is we have people with the same last names. And when you have your bank, when you have Chase or Horizon, pay it, your account number isn't always on there. So if your last name is Meyer and there's more than one, we're real careful about it, but we've made them, we've made a few mistakes and some people, so we found them, we reversed them. But it just makes more sense. And it's just a clean way. We do the ACH towards the end of the month. And so if we're just trying to get people to think about it, we encourage them to get into that plan.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any questions, other questions for the water board? Otherwise, Budget and Finance report, Bill.
We did not have a meeting. We are scheduled for a Zoom meeting this Wednesday at 8:30. Our, our bank account, as it always shrinks before June, is about 1.5 million. Today was the last day for delivery of on-time taxes. And I'm hopeful that we will, several people have told me that they've stepped up and have paid their full taxes for the year and, and those receipts will be coming to us next month. We're having a discussion on other things coming forward, going forward on, on Wednesday.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is, this is Nick again. Just a question for Budget and Finance. So we had a council session just specifically on budget and finance. Was there going to be a follow-up discussion to that? I know, I know we were kind of looking with Sender, looking at, you know, potential cost saving measures just to be kind of mitigate some potential concerns in the future. Is that, is there still going to be that follow-up?
Yeah, well, that was the, the plan when we had the discussion at the last council meeting, the, the, it was determined that we would, we would have an in-depth discussion on, at the next meeting, which is this, this upcoming Wednesday at 8:30.
Okay.
Human Resources, Bill.
No meeting. We will try to schedule something, but we determined we would wait till after this meeting to, to contact the committee.
Okay, so, you know, my understanding is that, you know, the police is not happy that they didn't get as big a raise as, as, as one of our other employees did. And so I think we need to make sure that we're working on that merit-based pay raise system. Do we know, has any work been going on with that? Or I guess you'll discuss it at that next meeting.
I think that, that's, that's something we have to, we have to discuss. The difference of 1.1%, the average salary of an employee, many are below and many are above, but the average salary is about $50,000. So the 1.1% times, times 50,000 is $550. And divide that by 26 and it's about $20. So the amount of money that we saved may not be worth the amount of hard feelings that we've, we've given. I mean, the individuals, if we gave them the extra $550, would, you know, they wouldn't notice it in their paycheck, but it, it kind of sticks in the craw. So it's something that we do have to discuss.
Right, but we did, well, go ahead.
Well, my comment is, is I don't understand why they had that differential to begin with. And it'd be my suggestion that, you know, we retroactively get the pay the same for all the employees beginning as of January 1st or whenever that pay raise went into effect, because for no more than is and the grief it's causing, I don't, it's, it just doesn't seem fair to me. It doesn't seem right. And I would be in favor of having everybody the same raise.
Since we can do it in, you know, in one paycheck, I just have to spend some Saturdays to get caught up if, if it's approved. And when we've done it in the past, it just became one, on one pay period, I announced to everybody that this was the, the catch-up amount. And so I think the difference is this is not like a regular business. Everybody's salary is, is public record. And so there's, you know, there's, if anybody asks for a record, if this was the XYZ company, I could say we don't provide that information. But in a, in a community, we, we are required to provide that information. So, yeah, it's, it's public record and it, it is probably not worth the cost savings.
I volunteer to help Bill on Saturday get the records caught up and paid.
Okay. The donuts, right?
I'll bring donuts.
So I'm confused. Where, where are we at? Do we have a motion?
I would make, I'll make the motion, but I'd like to hear what, well, I'd have to be second before we discuss it. But I'd move that we would have that pay increase retroactive that includes all the employees that didn't get the bump up. I mean, I forget what it was that was a 3% for some and 2% for others.
And the rest got 1.9.
Yeah, and, and I would say
Two got zero.
Yeah, and I'd say they all get the same, the same 3%. That's my motion.
I second it.
Alright, discussion then. So we, we did make a commitment to come up with the merit base. Is that still moving forward through HR? So I guess that's going to happen after this, if that's, if that's the motion then? So that would be what we
I don't, I don't see that happening until next year sometime.
Right, well, we, yeah, we made a motion to, to at least have it in place by, I believe by July 1st, wasn't that what we?
July 31st.
July 31st.
But with us not being able to have a meeting, I think we ought to push that back a little bit.
And so it wouldn't be, wouldn't be, and so that merit-based system that we came up with wouldn't be implemented until what pay raises are January 1st, are they, Bill?
Yes.
Well, yeah, we have to, the pay, the pay raises have to be decided. We could make any changes by state statute during the year. We can change salaries for employees, just not for elected officials.
Bob, the Human Resource Committee, before all this pandemic started and we shut down, Bill and Mike Conisek and Georgetta and Bob Sokowski, we sat down and had a meeting and we were getting, trying to get information on it. And so we, we, we have met, it's been on the agenda and we're going to move forward on it.
Okay. And so Bill, to, to implement this pay raise across the board, how much are we talking about for the town? Because we really should know what we're talking about.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about, if we can take sites out of the equation, we're talking about probably about $6,000 to $7,000.
And this is for all employees of the town?
Yep. I mean, $550 is the, is the, you know, is the average amount for five, for five employees in the police department. And there's a deputy clerk and, and then on the water side, there's two, there's two water employees who didn't get a raise. So we're not talking about a huge number of employees.
The water department employees, you mean like the two that work out on the street?
Right.
Okay.
Alright, I'm confused now.
The dispatchers, correct. Bill, the dispatchers?
I'm sorry.
The dispatchers? And the police department, the dispatchers?
And the, the dispatchers, well, the dispatchers have, have always, because they're part-timers, this was really the full-time employees that we, that we were talking about.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? I'm unclear now. My understanding over the last month or so was that the people that didn't get the raise were in the police department. Now, it sounds like from what I'm hearing that there are more employees involved that did not get the same raise?
It's Greg and Austin in the water department. It's Deanna in the deputy clerk. It's Renee that works for the police department.
And the police, yeah.
And that's, so there's four people in addition to the police department.
Dr. Lemay, oh, sorry to interrupt. One thing that I think you guys should consider is regardless of what you do and not discussing the merits of that, that, those changes or increases, including the differentiation, were spelled out in an ordinance. So I don't think it's as simple as voting. We can find a way around. So that's not my point, but I just want to make sure that we're properly following the procedure. Whatever you ultimately decide, if it's, if you're inclined to make it easy, there were two line items. One, which was the street department and giving the basis for that, which was 3%, and then everybody else with the 1.9. So my recommendation, you know, whether you can accomplish that tonight, there isn't an ordinance before you. So we probably, we have to consider making sure we have the paper trail to support what you're doing. To address Bill's point, I, yeah, everything is negligible, the amounts we're talking about. We're really talking about team morale and all of those. And those don't affect what I'm saying. I just want to make sure that the paper trail. So it may be more appropriate to make sure we have an ordinance at the next meeting, or if you're inclined to have another. But whatever your action is, if you're inclined to, to change that, I think we need to do it by ordinance, even if we amend the prior one. it by ordinance, even if we amend the prior one.
Okay.
In in the past, we have, when we've done this before, this is not the first time it's happened, it happened even before Chris was was involved with the town, and and we have made it a salary ordinance. So maybe we should be, as Chris suggests, that we should be approving the preparation of a salary ordinance, because as, as, as is evidenced, the amount of money that gets, the amount of money that's lost from month to month is negligible, so.
An amended salary ordinance, right, Bill?
Well, then I, then I'd like to then amend my motion to to reflect the salary ordinance, be amended to reflect the across-the-board 3% for the regular employees, full-time employees for our town.
I second it.
Okay, maybe next month, too, we can come back with exactly what, what, what the numbers are, exactly what we're talking about, so we know exactly what we're voting for.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put that together as part of the, as part of the salary ordinance.
Can we, okay. I think there are other issues that the Human Resources Committee was tasked with investigating. I think there are some other disparities when you look at across-the-board employee pay differentials. Specifically, I'm talking about the difference between Water Department employees and Street Department employees. I, I, I thought I understood this when it was just the police, but now, as I'm becoming more aware of disparities, when I say disparities, I don't think they're huge, but if we're trying to solve this motor, uh, the employee happiness quotient, so to speak, I want to make sure that we're looking at the whole picture so that we don't make a mistake here. I don't have a problem whatsoever with what John's proposing with getting everybody the same rough percentage increase, but I do think, I don't want to give the impression to the people that are concerned about new hire versus a guy that's been around and some of the other issues that were discussed outside the Town Council that I'm aware of, I don't want to give those employees the impression that we're not investigating the rest of the employment compensation package on the town. So I, I'm happy to vote for what John's proposing, which, which I guess, I, I really wonder whether we're, if this ordinance was restrictive in some way, which is what Chris is advising us, then I hope we're not shooting ourselves in the foot with this vote, but I don't, I think the intent is clear, I understand it, 3% across the board, I guess I'm happy with that, but I do want to make sure that we don't skip over some of the rest of this employment compensation.
John, just so I'm clear, at least from the the motion, my understanding is you're making a motion to prepare that ordinance for consideration at future meeting, right? Because.
Correct, correct.
So then that gets time to, I guess if there's additional considerations, John, Wal, at the next meeting, those could be addressed at that time, too. Does that address?
That, yeah, that that suffices. I just didn't want to, you know, may have this be the only action we take this year and then find out we still haven't done what we set out to, which was, you know, smooth out the disparities.
John, we are looking, we have Mike Conisek, and we have Georgetta Cox, and the rest of the Human Resource Committee, and we are looking at a survey to see where we're at and that we are, you know, we want to attract and retain our employees. So that's what we're looking at, we just haven't been able to meet. But no, there, we're ready to go.
Well, where are we on the, we had a presentation a couple of months ago before this quarantine from a company or a firm that wanted to review or they suggested a review of our handbook to bring it up to date, to bring it in sync with the, any laws, any regulations, so we don't find ourselves hanging out someplace on one of these issues like John's talking about. Where are we on that? I mean, we're sort of jumping around here, but.
John Coker, we did talk about that, I think it was February, because we haven't met since, and they did, they did do a presentation. So I would say it's not out of the question, we just haven't met again to decide on what we want them to do. I think they could help us. They don't do a lot of things we're looking for, but I think they could help to keep our books and stuff legal.
Well, the main thing I'm looking at is to make sure our handbook, our company, our town handbook is up to date, and it doesn't have any, any variances with, my gosh, all the rules and regulations that come out nowadays, you, you have to be up on top of it, and, and that's something that, that's all these people do, so.
Yes, no, it's, it's not, it's, it's on the, it's on the table, we just haven't met.
Okay, just checking.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second.
One last thing, Bob. So if I understand this motion, the next Town Council meeting will approve some sort of amendment to the current salary ordinance, such that the employees across the board will have had a 3% raise for this current year.
Correct.
Those that did not get it.
So they're, the employees now know that the Town Council's behind uniform 3% raise for all of them, but we still are going to open book on some of these other issues between now and the next Town Council meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, this just has to do with the salaries to get them all equal for the year.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both? Okay. Building Commission, Building Commission did not have a meeting. Board of Zoning Appeals, they did not have a meeting. I think Building Commission will probably try to have a meeting, hopefully sometime later this month. We'll have to try and do that virtually, and we'll see how that works. Board of Zoning Appeals, we're just going to have to see that, this, we're going to have a meeting this month, that's been canceled, so that's not going to happen until at least next month.
We did, at Mr. Gorman and Rich Jurisik's request, we did contact everybody and everybody, there's quite an agenda in terms of the number of items and some contentious matters, too, but everybody's very understanding. So that part, everything that was just postponed till the June meeting.
Yeah. Advisory Plan Commission, I don't believe we had any meetings right now.
We didn't meet, Bob.
Yeah, I think there is one scheduled, though, for.
Next Monday.
Yeah, next Monday.
Next Monday?
Yeah.
A virtual?
A virtual, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the committee reports?
This is Nick, so move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Building Permit Revenue Report?
Hey, we, the Building Permit Revenue Report is for really two months, from March 13th to May 8th of 2020, with 29 permits approved, totaling $1,207,364. That's the, the project cost total. And the revenue to the town is $13,631. We have one electric permit for $6240 with, I'm sorry, for $624, we had one electrical permit with $6200, $62.40 to the town. We had one street cut permit at 2819 Lake Shore Drive for $100. Legal expenses in April 2020, $8,465.10, $7,400.10 to Brazee Nelson &amp; James, $1,065 to Austrian Kuiper Gysitis. We paid the, the April fee to Corbin Group, $6,437.87. We have a motion to accept the, the revenue report.
I make a motion to accept the revenue report.
Have a second.
Nick, a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unfinished business. Lake Shore Drive sewer update. John, do we have anything new on that?
John Coker?
Yeah.
It's my understanding, all the paperwork and everything has been completed and the application had been sent down to Indianapolis for the State Revolving Fund Loan, the low-interest-rate loan. There's still the, the problem of, not problem, but the issue of having a public meeting to satisfy all the requirements. And I think that's the main thing that we're waiting on, is whenever Michigan City Sanitary District wants to have that meeting, how we're going to have it, I don't know. It'll be a virtual meeting at this point, unless things change, so.
Hoping everything's still on, still on track, as far as I know.
I think, Bob Lemay, I think Joy's on here, maybe she, does she know anymore, John?
I don't, is Joy here?
She's up in there.
She's here. Joy does not know anything more, although I would say that I, I wanted to be clear to everybody that the public hearing is, it's no longer a fact-finding hearing, it's just the, Michigan City Sanitary District will hold a public hearing to let everyone know how the project is going to proceed.
Okay.
That's all I had to say.
The San, excuse me, the Sanitary District did move it along, then. They, they passed it on, on their board and then sent it, sent the application, it sounds like.
Yes, yes, and.
That was done about a month ago, wasn't it?
Yes, and the county and Michigan City and the state, for that matter, I think, all think this project is an emergency, so it really went to the top of the list. I think we're on schedule to start construction in October still.
Oh, good.
All right, next on the agenda is the tree ordinance. I forgot to look at it. I don't know, is everybody else up on the tree ordinance, or do we want to move that to next month?
Let's move it.
All right, so let's make sure we keep that on the agenda. Next month, I will promise to read it and look it over again, it's been sitting there for a while.
Okay.
Okay, new business. The executive order. Of course, we passed the executive order last month, and that either needs to be renewed or have it expire this month. I've spoken with Brian Hogan a little bit about it, because the Country Club is more affected by it than anybody, probably. And I had a copy of that.
He's here.
Yeah, he is, yeah. I, I wanted to read my thoughts on it, but.
Okay.
Can you read that executive order that we had? Do you, do you have it, Chris?
I, what do you mean, the previous one, or?
The one, the one that we just, you and I discussed. Actually, I can pull it up my computer here.
Well, I, I have it available, just for everybody's benefit, it, the order, I guess, Executive Order 20204, which was, just represents April, that is set to expire tonight, that was the all-encompassing order that, that the council agreed to extend beyond the statutory, statutorily allowed seven days. Speaking to Dr. Lemay earlier, there was some discussion about, again, a reminder that that was coming up, and if any action was going to be done, tonight's meeting would make sense, but I, I don't speak to that at all, that's up to Dr. Lemay as the town's executive and/or the council. One line of thinking from Dr. Lemay is our discussion was that ultimately, everything stay in place, with the exception of golf carts being permissible on town roadways for operators displaying a disability placard and/or those age 65 or older. And the rest of that, much shorter than the last one, and it simply reiterates this. I guess from there, it's up to Dr. Lemay and the rest of the members of the council to discuss and/or consider.
And so my thought is, nothing changes other than that. But I want to get input from Brian Hogan as a representative from the Country Club. So Brian, you are unmuted, go ahead.
Thank you to, to the council, and my apologies, I have not seen any copy of a revised ordinance, so I don't know exactly what to speak to, but to recap a few things, since our conversation last month, at which point, 30 days ago, Long Beach was a very rare exception nationwide among golf courses being open, including our neighboring states of Illinois and Michigan. So we took some very strict rules that we enacted with the council to prohibit golf carts at that time. Since then, golf courses have reopened in both Illinois and Michigan, as well as 90% of courses nationwide, so we're no longer just the one green light of golf here. Locally, the Michigan City Municipal Course, Potawatomi, and LaPorte's Beachwood have all reopened, they are allowing golf carts on a single-ruiner basis and play in foursomes. That commenced on May 1st. Though what we are asking is to get back on the same footing as our neighboring courses are operating with. And, you know, with the other thing, our, our members have complied for the past month very diligently, we saw our able-bodied golfers out playing very frequently and using it as exercise and distancing responsibly, we issued enforcement when needed, but we now fear that prolonging this will have a disparate impact upon our senior and women members in particular. So we, we thank the council for considering the resumption of golf carts on the course, as well as our members' ability, regardless of their, their age, to take their golf carts from their homes to the courses, as they were previously allowed.
Thanks. So my concern is that Long Beach is a little different community than pretty much anybody in our area, in that we are at least 60% non-resident, mostly from the Chicagoland area. As a consequence, our golf course, having less restrictive rules, is liable to make us more of a golf destination than anywhere else. Illinois now allows golf carts, single-ruiner golf carts, but only to people with disabilities, that's what I just read in yesterday's Tribune. The City of Chicago actually has not opened any of their golf courses, theirs are all still closed.
Beverly Country Club, their, their private course is open using.
Right, but that's not in the City of Chicago, right?
That's this.
This is, this is the City of Chicago.
And it's open, Bob.
Well, okay, because they're private, all right. But that's, that's what Mayor Lightfoot's decided to do. My concern is, is that if, if our golf course has more lenient rules for riding, we're going to definitely increase the willingness of people from Illinois particularly to come here and basically make our community a little bit more at risk for this COVID, certainly increase the use of our grocery store, perhaps increase the use of our medical facilities.
Well, Bob, Bob, unless they're, unless they're, unless I'm wrong, Brian, you tell me, but you, you know, you can't play golf at a Long Beach Country Club unless you're a member. And so, so the people from Illinois could still play golf here last month, they just had to, had to walk. And, and if, if you, if you limit it to let them have a golf cart, one person per cart, I don't see how that's going to change things too much. You know, the, the club's not going to open up the course to everybody from Chicago, I'll tell you that right now, I, I don't think they will, anyway, and Brian can address that, but, you know, you're still going to have the same number of people playing, they'll just, the older members will have a chance to ride a cart, so, I mean, some of these older members will, can't walk the course, I mean, they need a cart.
Yeah.
And Bob, they have been, like Brian said, they have been very respectful, I live near the golf course, and I, they're walking, they're in safe distance, I don't see any congregation. So they usually play in twosomes, I think it is, and then when they walk it.
Yeah, my wife and I walk down there all the time around, and they were, everybody was following the rules very well, I think the, the club needs to be congratulated into how they enforce the, enforce the rules, and I think all the members were very respective of that. So, and I'm not a golfer, so, you know, so it's not going to affect me.
Not to, Brian, not to put you on, on the spot, but if you happen to know, you know, the other courses, kind of more like the Lake County, Porter County West here, which are more closer to the Illinois border, some are private, some are public, do, do you know what, what any of those are doing, or how, how they're responding with more so with respect to the golf cart situation?
Yeah, yeah, single-ruiner carts is, has been the policy. Yeah. Yeah. Single rider carts is, has been the policy for golfers of all ages. And the courses we mentioned have all been vetted through the LaPorte County Health Department, which we will pledge to work with and continue on the enforcement. So safety and enforceable rules are, are our key things that we're, we're striving for right now. But statewide, it's single rider golf carts. So we wouldn't be any exception there.
One quick, one quick question, Brian, while we catch you on the horn. What's the plan for the halfway house and/or the clubhouse in, in suing month now?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I believe Annette Corbett is on. I'll defer to her. We're again, following all of the county and state health regulations as to how that would go. Two, two other things to the, you know, points of some crowds and concerns. We have canceled both our Memorial Day member, member and welcome back gathering and the June invitational. So again, being proactive to avoid some of these concerns ourselves and self policing. Any specifics to the clubhouse policy? I'm not sure if Annette's able to speak there. I reckon that's her.
She's on somewhere. I saw her earlier.
Yeah, I did too.
I'm looking for her.
That video as well. Let me see if I can find her.
It was her name.
Oh, she's
I'm here.
There she is.
Oh, I can hear you good.
Hi, everybody.
Go ahead, Annette.
Sure. Before I answer John Wall's question, I'd like to just say about the golf carts. Having spent 14 years in human resources, you know, I'd help the town in any way I can with merit increases. And if you need somebody else on that committee for some help, I'd be happy to do that, even though I don't live in Long Beach anymore. I grew up in Long Beach. Also, having said that, when this ordinance first came into existence, it is up to Long Beach Country Club. We have, every year, we are the ones that monitor and check all of our members, every year, their insurance policies on who has carts. We have been given the authority by the town to issue the stickers and the placards for the carts that belong. Now, sometimes I've had members calling me saying, hey, I see people on carts with no Long Beach sticker on them. So number one, they're not always Long Beach members that are driving around on carts with a bunch of kids on there. Number two, Dr. Lemay, we do everything we can, like Brian Hogan said, we are not letting guests of our members, which is normally a privilege to play at a private club. It's just members only. And I can tell you, the reason I brought up the HR is I've heard a lot of stories from some of our members that are younger than 65 that won't, don't want to tell me the issues that they have medically of why they can't walk, whether it's asthma, whether it's carrying, they may be able to walk, but they can't carry a bag of clubs. So, I mean, that's putting them in a bad spot. As far as the clubhouse, we are allowed to open today. We are opening Wednesday. We are opening just for dinner, Wednesday through Sunday. We are doing 50% occupancy in any of our dining areas. We're opening the patio next week. And in accordance with the state guidelines, a pool can open Sunday, May 24th. And again, that's all following county, state, and CDC guidelines. Our employees will be married, wearing masks. The kitchen has already been wearing masks. They've been working for a month on frozen to go and other food for people sheltering in place. But we're following all the guidelines. The clubhouse is going to open. The halfway house will open tomorrow, and it's always weather permitting this time of year. And it's like a 10 to five kind of timeframe. But no one is allowed this first week on our rules into the halfway house. We'll have two people down there, one to cook and one to place the food outside on the table. So if they're having a hot dog, they can come by and get their hot dog, hot dog and keep playing.
Thanks, Annette.
Sure.
Thanks, Annette.
So what, what we've got is, is we prepared a extension, but we need to vote this probably or at least concoct this one piece at a time. My, and so what this executive order suggests is that we extend our executive order to last until one month from now or our next meeting. These are the provisions. Golf carts are permissible on town roadways for operators displaying a disability placard or, and/or those age 65 and older. That's, that's what Chris and I put together before this meeting. We can discuss that part first as a council. Comments?
Yeah. I mean, I, I definitely understand. I mean, I, at least, at least in my mind, you know, I don't look at Chicago necessarily as a, as a model for, you know, expert opinion, you know, regardless of what side of, you know, belief you are on, on certain topics, you know, politics aside. I mean, I, I don't look at that necessarily as an expert per se. So, you know, just doing what they do or adopting what they do or not do, I don't, I know that we're trying to do that. I think what we're trying to do is just be as protective as we can, you know, within reason for, for the residents of Long Beach. Understanding that, you know, for the club in particular, that really it's only to members and not guests. I mean, that takes out quite a bit of the population in concern. You know, the fact that it would still, you know, as proposed, or at least what the club is proposing is that, you know, it still would only be one person per cart. So those that truly needed a cart would have the ability to use it, but it wouldn't be opening it up to, you know, two or three people on a, on a cart if you have a four seater. You know, the other, the other question that goes along with it is, is moving it, or well, I guess that's, that's the question at hand. And so kind of hearing from, from Brian, hearing from Annette, you know, I'm, I'm more inclined probably than I was coming into the discussion about allowing golf cart use with, with those provisions. And, and I think it's one of those where, you know, things don't typically pick up until after Memorial Day and as weather gets nicer. And so I think it's, for me, it's more a matter of keeping, you know, keeping close tabs with, with, in conjunction with the, with the club. And, you know, you know, maybe it's something that we revisit if, if there needs to be stricter, stricter policies in the future. But I have every confidence in the club. I mean, so far, they've, they've been very responsive. They've taken proactive measures. And I have no doubt that A, you know, if they are experiencing problems or people not adhering to the one person per cart, they're going to take care of it and address it. And, and number two, I think that if, if the council noticed concerns with it, I think they would be very responsive to that.
So you want to make a motion?
Yeah. I mean, if, so if we're taking the executive order one, one at a time, I think a motion to allow, allow the resumed use of golf carts at one driver or one person per cart. I'm trying to keep it as basic as I can.
With no age or disability?
With no, with no age or disability restriction. Yeah. It just, the language would just be, golf cart use is permitted to and from the course, you know, one person per cart.
I hear a second.
I second it.
And again, my concern is, is that if we're easier than Chicagoland area, we're going to simply encourage more people from Chicagoland area to come here. And if there is a problem, unfortunately, we're not going to know for two weeks because that's what they give you.
They can come, but they won't be able to play, Bob. If they're not a member, they won't be able to play.
They're already here, Bob. They're just not at the country club.
I, you know, I, I, okay.
Dr. Lemay?
Yep.
And it's Annette Corbett again. And Nick, can we ask that instead of just one cart, if we can have two people, if they've already been sheltering at home, if a, if a couple of husband and wife, if they've already been sheltering, I mean,
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
The common household exception is what we, what we discussed.
Okay.
So I'd modify, I'd modify my motion to, to include that language.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion?
Dr. Lemay?
Yeah.
I, I have a question and it goes to Nick's point on, so are we talking golf carts that are only allowed on the road that are permitted to be, I just want to be clear on the language. I mean, is it, anybody can operate them on the roads or is it strictly for the golf courses?
Yes, just for the golf course because that's what the rule was before.
Yeah. And, and so is it proper to say, when we're saying golf courses, should we say properly permitted? I mean, is that, because there is a process for those to be street legal, right? For lack of a better description. As Mr. Hogan alluded to, and correct me if I'm wrong, the, the only ones that are permitted are the ones that are allowed to go to the golf course. Is that right? So if somebody comes to town and goes to their cottage, for lack of a better description, and brings a trailer with their golf cart, they're not necessarily, unless they're members allowed to operate. Just want to be clear so that we're not having any confusion.
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe they'd have to have a sticker. They also have to have a golf bag on the back and going to or from the golf course.
Yeah. The permit, the premise, the permit language, I see you're kind of thinking here, Chris. But, um, you know, if, if a car, if a cart is street legal, there's not, there's, even our prior order, I don't, I don't know if it restricted, would have restricted someone that had a legitimate street legal golf cart, whether they were a member of the club or not. You know, this one, with the spirit of it, we're trying to address, you know, what applies to the, to the course.
Okay. Okay. So any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Both aye. Okay. Then the other thing was, is we had a, what's the word where you have to be inside a
Curfew.
Curfew. Discussion on the curfew.
I think Michigan City lifted theirs, did they not?
What?
They did.
Yes. I don't stay up that late, Bob.
I don't either. So do I hear a motion about the curfew?
I make a motion that we open the curfew back up to normal, what it should be at normal. I'm not sure what that is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. So I think the curfew to me was kind of the weakest part of it. I'm not sure how much that accomplished. I think we mostly did it because Michigan City had it and I'm, I'm not sure it made a big difference. I don't think we had a big issue.
Ultimately, I think any theory behind that, and as Chief and I discuss, it's, it's almost impossible to enforce. But what it does allow is if there are occurrences or things that needed to be enforced, that's just one more tool or avenue that, if, if needed to be relied upon.
This is Deanna. Can you tell me who had the second?
Yeah, John Wall did, Deanna.
Oh, thank you.
To that point, Chris, I think, my understanding is that Michigan City also opened up some of the parks, not all of the parks. I think if we, I know our, my understanding again, and I'm, I'm speaking out of turn here, I think at the last park board meeting, somebody mentioned that some of the, the tape had been pulled off of the playground equipment and some of the signage had been removed. And I noticed there were some children playing at Melrose Park today in my neighborhood. So effectively, unless we reestablish some control over the park playground equipment with some barriers, barriers or so, you know, we kind of lost that battle. I'm not suggesting that we should. I mean, I, that's a separate issue. But I think in terms of the curfew, if, if we were experiencing the kinds of things that they're having in Chicago, for instance, with a lot of group gatherings past a certain time of the evening, and if Bob Sokowski has a desire to, to maintain that, then that's one thing. I, barring that, I guess I'd say we remove it.
Yeah. I certainly am not advocating one way or the other, just trying to explain that of the working tool behind it. I'm certain some of these are, again, more, more hindrance than not. But the, the thought process and the effort was that the town trying to put some best practices in early, right? And, and maybe the, hopefully the stages have outlived some of those previous provisions in that first executive order.
Dr. Lemay, this is Chris Gibson. Can I throw a comment out there, please?
Mm hmm. Go ahead.
I just want to make sure, you know, and this is probably directed at Chris Willoughby too, as much as anybody, as you're doing this revision of the executive order vis a, be the governor's, you know, new executive order with the phase in plan, you know, when Long Beach Country Club brought up the in-house or the in-dining, going to that at 50% capacity, depending on how this is drafted, Chris, I want to make sure that if it's the will of the council, that Long Beach can, Country Club can do that on Wednesday because the governor's executive order actually says that 50% capacity for in-dining can only happen one week after you enter phase two. And phase two, it could be argued, Long Beach is not entering phase two until midnight tonight. And you had, Dr. Lemay, you had talked about extending the ordinance. And so if this isn't drafted correctly, you could also be extending that Long Beach is still in phase one per the governor's order. And so that it's, I live in Indianapolis full time, and it's something we're addressing with the restaurants here because Indianapolis, Marion County did not go to phase two until today. And so, well, actually it won't go till phase two until the 15th under the local ordinance. You know, and so will restaurants be able to on Monday, the 18th in Marion County, go to 50% in dining or not is the question because, or will they need to wait till the 22nd of May, one week after Mayor Hogshead order expires on the 15th? So I hope that's not too convoluted. But what I want to make sure is that the will of the council is reflected in how you draft this ordinance because, in this local order, because if you don't, if you just extend what you already did, I think the argument could be made, Long Beach is still in phase one. Are you following me, Chris, or am I making any sense here?
I, I am. But I, I think that ultimately, we're going to try to avoid what other communities who had similar orders and not create the confusion and not, ultimately, the only things, it's going to be very specific on what is extended and what's accepted out of this. So it's not a general extension.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I just wanted to make sure that that was on your radar, that depending on how this is drafted, I don't want to get into a situation where Long Beach is, you know, stuck in phase one longer than, you know, the council intends it to be.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Can you repeat that motion again, Mary Lou?
My motion was to lift the curfew and go back to the normal.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Then the other thing was that 24 hour, or I'm sorry, 14 day stay at home order for when you came from out of state. Michigan City changed theirs to 14, to seven days. I don't know why. That makes no sense at all to me. Certainly doesn't have anything to do with the way this virus seems to act. But the question is, do we want to lift that 14 day stay at home order for people coming from out of state? Discussion.
Yeah. I think, you know, because we're so close to Illinois and so close to Michigan, I mean, and I thought about this after the fact, right? That, you know, if you, if you go to a restaurant in Michigan, you know, to do takeout, you're crossing state border, do you need to quarantine in that case? You know, I, I know that wasn't the spirit or the intent of, of the crafting of the verbiage, but it just, it just kind of got me thinking of how, how close we are to some proximity and into some of these things here. I mean, being in close proximity to a major metropolis area doesn't, doesn't help. But again, it's very, it's very difficult to, to police when, if people, you know, leave or if they take a vacation somewhere and, and, you know, how do you follow up and find out where they actually went? I mean, if they went, you know, to, to another country or something or traveled internationally. So I, I guess for, for me, I agree, the seven days for Michigan City seem kind of arbitrary. And, and, you know, to the best of our ability to try to preserve as much as we can in Long Beach, it's just, I mean, it almost seems like, it seems like we should be as consistent with the state as possible. It's just, I mean, it almost seems like, it seems like we should be as consistent with the state as possible. Because to try to control something here in just a small town, and, and things are happening all around us, whether we affect change or not. And so it's hard, it's hard. That one is one in particular that I think is difficult for us to institute, but, but all, you know, around us as different or varying degrees of that, that requirement. I'd be curious what other, what other council members think. So I, I'm, I'm inclined to, to remove it, but.
Well, I guess I just like the idea that it encouraged people to adhere to Illinois' stay-at-home order. Unfortunately, it doesn't seem to have worked. Other discussion? All right, so do I hear a motion to, um, rescind the 14-day stay-at-home order for people from out of state?
I'm not the motion to rescind it.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah, this is Nick, I'll, I'll second, these aren't easy decisions.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Aye. Okay, uh, I think, Chris, that pretty well takes apart the, uh, executive order, doesn't it? Have I forgotten anything?
Well, it really puts you right back to, the only thing on there is, is the golf cart issue.
Do we not, do we not have the community center, is that part of that?
Yeah, that's.
The parks and.
Yeah, I guess we should discuss the parks.
Who was the nay on that?
I was the nay.
There was one nay on the 14-day.
That was me.
Oh, okay.
Could you remute everybody other than the council? We're having some feedback.
Okay.
If the folks aren't talking, if they can go unmute, mute for participants.
Mark Curry, could you mute your microphone? There you go.
All right, so, uh, I guess we need to discuss what we're going to do about the, uh, let's talk about the parks first. Um, so Chief, the, the, the tape has been taken down, a number of those locations, is that right?
Yeah, they pretty much have fallen down, so we took them down.
My thought is, is they probably need to stay up. I, I, I just don't like the idea of kids playing on that equipment. Um, that, that just doesn't seem, seem like a good idea to me. Um, but I'll be happy to enter, to hear what other people think.
What's the, uh, the governor, what's the governor's order there? Is that the 24th also in the next phase? Is that phase three, that parks reopen? Trying, I was trying to pull it up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the governor has parks open in Indiana yet.
No, not yet, but I think it's coming up here in the next phase, which is, is that the, is that the 20? It's coming up in a couple of weeks.
You know, I'm not sure.
Believe the phase three is the 23rd. I'm looking at the order, um, right now. Give me just a second. While Chris is looking at the order, this is really not germane to this specific discussion, but we need to be talking about, I mean, this will take us through into June, I guess, what we do tonight. We, we want to, we don't have to do it now, about what July 4th will look like. I know the civic has canceled, but at least I think they, well, the letter that I received at the house said they canceled everything.
Everything's canceled.
So the fire department traditionally has the ice cream social and we have other, potentially, I mean, if we wanted to still do something as a town, I think we need to talk about that a little bit before June, maybe even. If we want to table it till June, we can. But if we're going to do whatever we do with this executive order, we want to probably be thinking forward to what we want to do in June.
Yeah, I can imagine the ice cream social is going to be a good idea. Um, given that July 4th, the July 4th parade and fireworks have all been canceled. Um.
Well, that's, I guess that's my question. Did we cancel? I, I know that the civics stopped, you know, put a stop on their activities. Did we as a town decide about the parade and everything else? Or maybe I missed?
The Long Beach Civic sponsors the parade, fireworks and the picnic. So that's why that's canceled. Cause they don't, cause people stand so close together and I can't imagine wanting, them wanting to come down and participate.
Yeah.
Um, to answer the question, stage three does begin on May 24th, so stage two runs through midnight of the 23rd. Are, I'm looking through the order now. There's, there's reference to state parks and campgrounds being, um, closed, well, campgrounds being closed altogether. And stage one and two, state parks remaining open to the general public. However, the welcome centers, ends and other buildings are closed. I'm not finding anything. Chris Willoughby, do you remember?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the, this is Nick, I'm looking at the plan here right now. Um, and it's, and it shows for phase three, which begins May 24th, as you've indicated, playgrounds, tennis courts, basketball courts and similar facilities may open with social distancing guidelines in place. Uh, community pools, et cetera, uh, those are all part of that. And also includes gym, gyms and fitness centers may open with restrictions. Class sizes and equipment must be spaced to accommodate social distancing. Limit class size, equipment must be cleaned and used after employees are required to wear face coverings.
So. And essentially, you're getting to the point where you're, you're, other than the golf cart issue, you're starting to follow, or maybe it's prudent to do that, again, that's up to the decision makers, I guess, but to follow the governor's order, right? I mean, that, you do have that ability, that it can let this thing expire tonight unless the golf court, cart issue is, is worthy of the, the executive order here. Cause that seems to be the only piece hanging on unless you further restrict the parks.
Well, and we did away with the golf cart issue, right, Chris? We, that was, that motion was to let anybody ride golf carts as long as you're going to and from the golf course, which is the way it was before.
But two by two, right? I mean, you're limiting.
Well, yeah, we're saying just one at a time.
So, or I guess the issue is that, that remains the one hanging issue and
Yeah.
So again, it's, is that worthy of an executive order to carry out that? I don't, I don't know. I guess it depends on what you do with the parks. And again, just as a reminder, for you, as you go through all of these, while they have them more restrictive, you can't have it be less restrictive. And the governor has, you know, again, put the plan out there.
Well, and, you know, I think the thing to remember is, is that the governor has no idea where we're going to be at come May 24th. Cause he's just pulling this out of thin air. Um, it remains to be seen where we're going to be at in terms of this pandemic, especially with communities um, allowing more activities. Um, this is going to go up, the question is simply how much? Um, so, you know, we're, we're kind of modeling after a, a model that, that really isn't necessarily based in any sort of reality. Um, so.
Well, and I, I will say Governor Holcomb has been very clear that these dates are far from set in stone and that he'll continue to monitor the, you know, the health data and science here. And, you know, um, I, I will say, you know, being fairly close to this for a lot of our clients down here in Indianapolis, you know, Governor Holcomb, I think, has done a fairly good job, uh, of trying to listen to Dr. Box and his health experts on this. So, um, you know, I, I think he will modify it, you know, if, if they tell him it's necessary, I think that he's going to listen to them.
Yeah, this is Nick, I mean, just kind of back to the, to the thought earlier. I mean, again, you know, we're, we're not 100% insulated from, through the world around us. And, and I'm not suggesting that, oh, let's let, you know, let the state make the decision, you know, we don't do anything here. But at, at the same time, it, it really is, it becomes more and more difficult that if others are, are, you know, following the, the state's plan and, and we're not, it's hard, it's, you know, we still go to the groceries, we still go out into the community. I mean, even with social distancing, we're still, there's still risk, I guess, is what I'm saying. So, and to me, I feel like the more, the more we can stay consistent with the state's plan, the, the better. Um, I mean, you're, you're always, you know, darn if you do, darn if you don't. If, you know, if we, something were to happen and we weren't more restrictive, um, and, and vice versa. But I, I just feel like to me that the safest, the safest decision is to stay as consistent with the state, um, that, that we can. I mean, if we were, if we were Lake County and, you know, we, we had a, a significant, you know, greater amount or Marion County and, and you're dealing with different circumstances. I mean, most of the cases in La Porte County are, you know, from the, from the correctional facility. And, you know, obviously I don't want to see that number spike in, in turn, just as everyone else doesn't want to see. But again, I, I feel like, you know, we've been following the state's plan to this point and CDC's recommendations. And I feel like that's, uh, you know, the safe move to continue.
Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion about the playgrounds?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd make a motion to, um, I mean, we're, we're might be, I mean, we're, we're talking about extending this to the next meeting, which would be, would cross the next phase.
Right, that would be the, uh, I believe the 11th. Is that right, Chris? 11th?
Yeah, or if you do nothing, the governor's order is.
The 8th is the next.
The 8th, I'm sorry, but the, and if you do nothing, the governor's rule is the default rule, which would be the 23rd.
Yeah.
And then I, just as full, so Dr. Lemay has the ability to do a seven-day limit, just as a, as an executive order. Any extension of, beyond that is the requirement of the council. And if you do nothing in this, the current one, you know, has the sunset provision of 11:59 PM, then the governor's order becomes the default rule.
Yeah, so I, I'd make a, I'd make a motion for, for that particular item to be part of, um, uh, to expire and, and let the governor's order take effect.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Cooper.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. Um, and then lastly, the community center. Um, we've got a number of different businesses there. Uh, there's the Y, there's the massage place, there's the, um,
Yoga?
Pilates or yoga.
Yeah.
Insurance.
The Tai Chi.
Tai Chi, okay, so all that's.
So there's the haircut and, and, uh, exercise with Amy Chen. And there's the girlfriend's sale with the resale of women's clothes.
Oh, that's right. Now, the, the girlfriends sale.
Right now, right now, Bob and everybody, we, it's just under $3,300 a month that we forgave, uh, for the month of April. And, um, you know, I don't see us, we don't really lose that much money. But I'm concerned because these people, when I got here in 2012, were paying $100 to $150 a month in rent. And recognizing the cost of the, we certainly don't make any, you know, we lose money based, it's the community center isn't intended to be a profit. But, you know, these people have had their rent tripled and have stepped up and done that. And I, I'm concerned about, you know, obviously the health issues, but their, you know, their, their business is, is suffering greatly. And, uh, and they can't guarantee that people are going to come back in, in waves, even if we allow it back. But I, I think, uh, restricting them from coming back to work. Um, I think the 11th and maybe, uh, so the haircuts, apparently haircut salons can open today, is that not right, for the state?
Correct.
And, and I, you know, I, I've seen, I don't, I think yoga can also have social distancing, uh, within that. I don't think, you know, most of those classes have, have more like 10 to 12 people in them. So they're, when they're a thousand-foot classroom, they're certainly can do that. I don't know about, you know, how some of these other ones. And I don't know about the massage, uh, Julie Sosa's massage, and she may choose not to go forward with that. I don't know how that works and how that doesn't work. But I'm concerned that if we preclude these people from, the only one who's working now is Jim Deaner, because he's an essential worker. He deals with people's finances and they obviously need to be, have securities sold and things like that if they're trying to stay alive. But, um, I don't know what we, what we want to do with that. My, my sense is that we should allow this at least on a limited basis. Somebody told me that the Y plans to open on the 24th. I didn't know whether that meant in La Porte, if it meant in La Porte and Michigan City, if it meant just Michigan City.
It, it, it means what the governor's order means everywhere.
Yeah.
You know. I think one of our issues is that we are the landlords, so to speak, of all of these various businesses that we're talking about.
Right.
You're, you're looking at restroom sanitation, you're looking at, I think a lot of the language that I under, that I remember reading in the governor's order dictated some sanitation requirements that I'm not so sure we're in a position to, to accomplish. So I think we need to just be aware of those. I'm not sure how we address it, whether we close the restrooms, whether we, you know, get some sanitation done on our part, independent of the tenants or, I mean, it's up to the Y, let's say, and the people that are going to patronize it, I guess, to follow whatever their specific requirements will be. But the common areas and all, I'm not so sure where we stand with that in terms of liability and practicality.
And we also have the pickleball players. They're, they're jumping at the bit to come back, I'm sure. Um, and we would have some liability for, for them, since they're, they don't really rent. They're, they're just using our public gymnasium, right?
Right.
Well, and the table tennis also is, is the, you know, the park, the park board pays rent for that room. But they, uh, you know, and I don't know how the liability works.
Well, I think the argument is they're not going to be able to come till that, the next stage. So that unless you were inclined to extend all of these and the rest of those businesses to, to John Wall, I think the argument is they can't operate unless they can show that they're complying with those. So it, it does get a little convoluted and it isn't simply, I think you raised some good points about the overlap of roles here. Um.
Well, yeah, and the governor's EO, um, Chris, you know, it requires all Hoosier employers, as of actually today, to have, you know, uh, safeguards and a plan in place, uh, to your point, John, um, regarding, you know, um, health screening process. I'm looking at the language here, enhanced cleaning and the disinfecting protocols. And that's on everybody as, as of, um, uh, today, that all Hoosier employers need to have that. Now, obviously that becomes more, uh, of an issue once you reopen. But, um, those safeguards are supposed to be, that plan is supposed to be, um, in place by today.
But for people like the pickleball players and the tennis, table tennis players, that responsibility probably falls on the town, as were the landlords, uh, they're, they're using basically park department space, right?
Yes.
And I guess the, I guess the issue is, do you open that up? Or do you leave that closed? Or do you need an executive order to accomplish that? Because those businesses, again, they have to comply to run their individual businesses. Maybe you leave the rest of that shut so that they cannot, I, I'm just trying to give you alternatives. Maybe it is that you extend the executive order and you just keep that closed. I don't know, but you have, I guess, options in between too.
I think if we open it up, we better have a plan for some sort of sanitation in the rest areas and the doorways and some of the common areas. I don't think you can just open it up and count on, count on the tenants doing all the sanitation.
And I think you can encourage those tenants, you know, the, the state is providing under the, the, some, some PPE, that personal protective, protection equipment in the form of face masks and shields and sanitizers that are free. And they just have to go online, there's a link, that they can get all of those things.
I think we, at a minimum, we ought to have something in the restrooms that's, you know, hand wash that's rated properly and/or something. order states that we open up a public facility such as ours, we need to have some sort of a plan in place. I mean, I'm willing to serve on some, I, I, I don't know if, I don't know if we should get the green light without having something in writing and, and some sort of proactive plan. My understanding was, we talked about that last month with the town hall and we did not get that accomplished. So I was a little disappointed to find out about that, but we, by rights, we should have some sort of a plan in place, I think.
Dr. Lemay, uh, in our last newsletter from our firm, um, in the Sentinel, there's an, it outlines everything for the governor's EO. I just sent that to Chris Willoughby too. Uh, but that, I mean, it, it, it pretty clearly tells you what is required as far as, uh, what needs to, what safeguard protocols need to be in place and, uh, that they need to be posted publicly. And then it also gives you some ideas of things that are recommendations from the, uh, governor's EO that aren't necessarily, uh, ironclad and enforceable, but are recommendations.
So given that we don't have any of that in place, I would move that we not open it up until the next meeting and we can always have a special meeting if, once we get it set up and we decide we need to open parts of the building. So that would be my motion.
I'll second that. And then I'd start the discussion by saying that I'd be more than happy to sit down with anybody. I know the Michigan City Chamber of Commerce has come out with a, a COVID, uh, reopening set of guidelines for businesses in the town. And I think if we use that as a framework along with what the governor's order states, then we can come up with something. I'm not suggesting we have to sanitize the whole building, but I think we better do something besides where we're at right now.
And, and John Wall, to your point and to Chris Gibson's point, that, that the state has provided pretty, pretty straightforward and easy resources. And so that, to, to be able to take those, I, I think that'll be a, a rather easy undertaking for, for you to do. It's just needs to be done.
And John, I can work on that with you and be fine. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And again, if we can get that done, maybe we have a special meeting to open that up. Does that sound reasonable, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Yeah. And I, I would just encourage you too, John. I mean, I, I don't know who, if the community center bill, who has a contact with the YMCA, but as they're looking to reopen, I mean, I, they're probably going to be, uh, not to discredit, you know, the other, the other tenants in the building, but they're, they're probably going to be on top of their game with, with cleaning and all of the requirements that they need to do. So you might even ask them, you know, what are your, what are your plans for cleaning, you know, inside? If they have a service that they're planning to use, you know, maybe there's some option to, to extend that to include other portions of the community center, if there's some nominal fee that the town has to, has to, uh, take care of. But I don't know, there's something to explore.
Yeah. It might be as simple as signage and some soap dispensers or something. Bob and I will come up with something.
Yeah. We, well, uh, one of the, the tenants does provide very regular bathroom cleaning, but what I was thinking about is, is what John Wall had discussed, uh, that we may approach, and what you're saying, Nick, too, is that we may approach the, uh, the Y because they do clean their facility in La Porte. And maybe they would agree to, uh, to make a very regular, a much more regular cleaning of the, uh, of the, uh, of the bathrooms, maybe for some, for some fee that would, uh, be cut, would provide enough comfort for, for all of us that it's being, but I, I agree it, we do need to have a plan. By the way, uh, just for the benefit, uh, I, I did contract with, uh, Surf Pro and they are coming in a week from Tuesday for the $800, uh, big cleanup for the, uh, the town and, uh, for the town hall and the, uh, and the cleaning service, uh, I've scheduled to come back, uh, the first Friday. They've been coming every other Friday, the first Friday in June after the two weeks, uh, that, uh, succeed the, uh, the cleaning of Surf Pro.
Oh, regarding the executive order, we've basically gone with one person per golf cart unless you're from a, the same home. Uh, and we decided to keep the community center closed. Is there anything else we, that I'm forgetting? I think that's about it, right?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Add into the electrical inspector or is that, or is that-
Yep. Leroy Pinkston, the electrical inspector. So Leroy's not been doing any electrical inspection. He's concerned about going into homes, I think.
Well, he's not, the, the problem is we've, you know, we've collected fees from electricians and, you know, they want to work inspected before they, somebody closes the wall.
Mm-hmm.
I think we do have a little bit of a, of a dilemma there if we can't, if we can't complete the inspection of electrical.
Leroy's not comfortable going in, right?
Yeah. If he goes into an empty house, I think it, it's suffices, but yeah.
Actually, he's ready to come back. He was just concerned that someone wouldn't let him cross over from Michigan.
Ah, okay. Well, since we took care of that, it's not a problem. All right. So we can tell Leroy he can come back.
He can come back, yeah, just for the, the jobs that are, or that are waiting. Okay.
That's right. Okay. That's right. Cause he's based in Michigan. Okay. Uh, police commission request for officer Sykes. That was-
Yep. This is Nick. I request I put that on the agenda. Um, so when any, um, this came out of the police, uh, police commission, uh, any new officer, um, is required to go under a one-year probationary period. Um, and then, and there's, I believe, and Chief Solkowski can, uh, add to this conversation here, but, um, there, there are certain requirements during that period of time. Uh, once they're, once they're past that, uh, a bit of an incentive on the other end of that is, uh, they are eligible then to receive a $2,000 pay increase, um, that is consistent with, uh, prior police, uh, officers for the town. Uh, and that's a practice that is consistent with other, um, uh, other municipalities with law enforcement. So, uh, would, uh, would, uh, make a motion, uh, and recommendation, um, to, to grant that, uh, request to increase this, uh, officer Sykes salary by the $2,000 annually.
Coker.
Can I, can I just make a, a comment here? Uh, Officer Sykes was given, because he was a new employee, was giving it, you know, we've got confusion. We've got 3%, we've got 1.9%, we have 0%. He was a 0%. His, his $2,000 would be greater than a, the 3%. And my suggestion might be, as Chris Willoughby has suggested, that we, that we just make this all part of, I mean, if we can agree tonight that this is something that the council wants to do, that we make that all part of the, uh, the new salary ordinance that would be agreed upon, yeah, uh, in, at the June meeting.
If I can say something, the reason he's getting this bump is because he made his year's probation. His year's probation was up in February. We haven't been able to have a police commission meeting in order for me to bring this up. So I, I don't think this has anything to do with the salary ordinance.
This is all policy, previous policy, right?
Right. He would still, he would get the bump and then his 3% increase.
Wait a minute now. That, that, I don't know if I understand it exactly that way, Mary Lou.
Well, okay. His bump would have happened in February. He, the mayor, the increases were given in January, so wouldn't he get a 3% in January?
He wasn't included in the 1.9%. Any new employees were exempt from the 1.9%.
Because of the ordinance, not because of the-
Right. Right.
Right. It wasn't our policy. It was because of the ordinance that was written in December.
Correct.
So John, he worked 11 months and didn't get the increase in January. He should at least get that plus his 3%, uh, plus his bump.
But here's, this is one of my issues, Mary Lou. I don't begrudge, I, I have a lot of respect for him. I've been on a lot of calls with him. He's a wonderful guy, great asset for the town. My problem is, you know, in my conversations with Mike Kinesek and some of the other people that are involved in the human resources side, I, I just want to make sure there's some sort of consistency here so that we don't shoot ourselves in the throat again. I don't begrudge him getting both, but I just want to understand that my, I thought at the police commission, Nick, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I thought at the police commission, the request was made to get him his customary post-probationary period jump, which again, is, is apparently not in the written document so much as a convention that we've done over, over time, which again, I don't have a problem with. But to, to double them both up was not what I understood was the, what, what was talked about at the police commission, but I could, I could stand corrected.
Yeah. The, the only thing that we discussed at the, at least at the, um, police commission meeting was to grant, um, the, the customary, um, salary increase following the one-year probation. So to me, that, that's, that was my motion is, is strictly on that piece. How we, how we decide and look at or view the salary ordinance, um, that's a, that's a separate, separate matter and, and that gets addressed at the next council meeting.
I think we're mixing apples, I think we're mixing apples and oranges if we do both in one motion, Mayor. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And just for clarity, cause I don't know how many other employees that might affect because there's a line item in that ordinance that says any 2019 hires were not included in general. So I don't know if he's the only or whether there are other employees that fall in that category.
The water department had one also.
There were two new employees hired, the new water employee to replace Ron Griffin and Mitchell Sykes, Officer Sykes.
So we had three levels. We had one, we had the zeros, the 1.9s and the threes. So that's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah.
So my point is the person in the water department, they'll work a year and a half before they see an increase. If you go back to the ordinance that was passed in December, that no one gets an increase. It hasn't been there a year. And then with Mitchell, he would have, if he hadn't gotten the bump, he would have worked almost 23 months before he got an increase. Your whole purpose is to attract and retain. And if you read the newspaper or anything, La Porte's hiring police officers right now. Chesterton's hiring. And I think, you know, we've got a pretty good force here and we want to attract and retain them.
No, I don't disagree one bit with what you're saying, Mayor, but I think we need a little more science behind our decisions. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
I, I'd prefer that we stick with what we decide, what, what Nick proposed, which is we give Officer Sykes his customary bump post-probationary period. And I think he's done a fantastic job and deserves that. But I, I think we're muddying the waters by trying to incorporate this 3% retroactively for his case because I think there's other-
No. No. I, I, I wasn't trying to do that. I'm letting the salary ordinance deal take care of the 3%. I just, I'm just doing the bump after his probation. I didn't want to, I didn't want to include the other one.
Yeah. That's my understanding too, Bob. And that's what, Mayor, I'm not, you know, I, again, it's not that the guy doesn't deserve it, but I think we need to get a little more science behind all these. There's, there's other disparities. I mentioned them earlier in the meeting. I don't really want to go into detail right now, but between the water department and the street department, there's other disparities that we have not addressed that we need to address. So I think we, it's not quite as simple as, as, as what you might think.
Oh, no. I get that. Okay. So we have a motion from Nick and a second?
I'll say, uh, coker.
All right. So Nick, repeat your motion again.
Uh, the, the motion, well, actually the, the motion would be for Officer Sykes to receive his, uh, customary, uh, $2,000, uh, pre-annual salary increase. Um, if, I would make the motion to make that retroactive. If he completed that in February, to make it, um, make it active as of the date that he reached his one-year probation.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nobody opposed? Okay. Um, all right. So public comments. So the way this is going to work is that I think everyone who's not been part of the discussion so far is muted. If you look at the bottom, there's a thing that you can click on that says reactions and that gives you an option of either clicking on a thumbs up or a clap. Um, if you want, make a public comment, why don't you clip, clip on the thumbs up and then I'll try to call on you. And I'll go through. Okay. I've got Becky. I'm going to unmute you, Becky. You're unmuted. Go ahead, Becky.
Okay. Hi, it's Becky Lipton, the lady that's been making you crazy about the traffic calming strategies on Moore Road. I just wanted to give you a real quick update on where I'm at with that. I was gathering information to bring to you. My first thing to say is thank you, Chief Solkowski, because I know you reached out to one of the vendors anyhow, maybe more, and also for what you reported tonight about working on traffic calming. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say is I've had some personal other things to, going on in my life, so I was not able to get all the bids in. I've gotten two bids from people who provide either speed tables or speed cushions, which you know are these sort of more sophisticated, uh, versions of a speed bumps that aren't damaging or aggressive to traffic and that allow the emergency vehicles to go through. And the bottom line on that is it, in order to put a speed cushion or a speed table across a street, it's gonna, it's gonna come to somewhere between a thousand and $2,000 per installation, more or less. The other, uh, companies, and I still have to get, uh, quotes from some of these companies. I've gotten quotes from two, uh, speed cushion companies and two, uh, radar speed sign companies. And the radar speed signs look like they're going to be more in the ballpark of $3,000, $2,800 to $3,000 each for those. Um, I did not investigate anything to do with, uh, whether the state or the county has jurisdiction on Moore Road or on Lake Shore Drive. I don't know anything about that. I think that should come a little later on, but, but, um, anyhow. Um, and, uh, the, and the final thing I wanted to say is one of my neighbors across the street in Shoreland Hills was in touch with her Michigan City Councilman, Jean Simmons, and Jean Simmons said that he's going to try to, uh, reinstall that, uh, radar speed sign that was up last summer for a month or six weeks over by where Oriole Trail-
My phone.
Comes into, uh, comes into Moore Road there and that was able to, um, comping the little bit. So I would be glad to give a report to, you know, a detailed report to whoever's interested and hopefully I'll have pretty much most of the information gathered by next month. That's it.
If, if I could comment on that?
Please.
We're trying to get the radar trailer set up closer to where your house is. Not only does the radar trailer tell you what your speed is, it also collects data as far as the date, time and the speed the vehicles are traveling at. So that would be the traffic study that we need to get done.
Yeah. That's great. That's a great thing. Yeah. These $3,000 things that most of them had that, that facility to do that too. Yeah. That's great. Chief Solkowski, if you want to have a conversation on, I'd be glad to. We can exchange information on email.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Char Mitchell? I'm trying to unmute you. There you go. You're unmuted. Char?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I had a question about whether and when there would be a large item pickup for the garbage collection. Is that on anyone's radar screen right now?
Can I respond, uh, respond to that? We actually have never had a large item pickup in our contract. Um, and we have had the, the good graces of the Republic Services have provided us with a large item pickup. Uh, what we do have is that every week of 52 weeks, you could put out one large item and they will pick it up. Now, there's some, uh, restrictions on what the large item pickup or what the, how large that item may be. But the problem that we've been having is the large item pickup has turned into a lot of, a large pickup of a lot of small items. And I think what people have been trying to do, and it's very difficult to do that with the new service, our costs have actually gone down because we go from two drivers to one driver. And so I, I, and maybe we can, we could schedule one of those and we have some money, uh, in the budget. And so I maybe we can we could schedule one of those, and we have some money in the budget that people have paid for something like that. But I'm not sure. I guess what I'd really like to hear from you, Shaw, is what what do what do you want to see? What do you expect a large item pickup to be? Is that cleaning out a bunch of things out of your garage? Or is it or is it one big item? Or several big items?
It's it's three big items, and I tried, I didn't get a response when I tried online and phoned to reach the town. So and I tried to get a private service to do it, but it's I couldn't find one. So if I could even just get a number to call, if maybe I could even work with Republic directly, like, I'm wide open to anything, but I have three large items I would love to get rid of.
Can you write this down, Shaw, right now?
Sure.
Call tomorrow afternoon, 874-6616, and ask for Bill.
Thanks so much.
Okay, I got a message that Mary and Jim Ryan had their hands up, but I don't know how to find you. If you could hit the reactions button, then I can find you. But I think if you're on a phone, I can't tell who you are.
Oh, they're on the second page at the top left.
The pages may be different depending on your.
Yeah. Sam?
She's waving, Bob.
She's waving. We're on Hollywood Squares.
Yeah, I think so.
Ryan's, if you can put a hand, if you go down to the bottom of your screen, look at the reaction button, click on that and put raise your hand or wave. There you go.
This is, whoops.
Anybody getting it?
Hey, there's a thumbs up.
You got a thumbs up, Warner.
Oh, here we are. Got it. You are unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. We're trying to find out about how long it takes to get a permit, because we're having an awful long time trying to get a pool permit put through.
Yeah, so the building commission's going to have to schedule a meeting. We've, you know, we were trying to do these things virtually is difficult, but I think, you know, we were kind of hoping that this pandemic thing would end and we could start having real meetings where we could actually look at site plans.
Well, we we have a license architect that wrote did the entire plans just because we had feeling this might be a problem.
Yeah, it's just a matter of the building commission being able to look at it. And I think what we're going to do is what we'll have to, we're going to have to have a virtual meeting and then use the shared document feature on here so that we can look at it on the computer.
Well, about when about when would that be? Because we've been waiting already almost.
Virtual meetings, a month.
Three months.
It has been a lengthy period of time.
Yeah, generally, building commission meetings are once a month, but the pandemic has obviously thrown a monkey wrench into that. But I think we're going to have to just start having the meetings. So I think we're probably looking at having a meeting. I believe the meetings are like the third Friday of the month at 1:00. And so I'll see about see if we can't get a meeting together then.
So we have to wait. So it's another month, then?
There's nothing to be done.
Third Monday of this month, so this is May.
Okay.
So third Monday of May. I'll try and see if I can't get that set up, okay?
It's it's Friday.
It's Friday.
Third Friday.
I'm sorry, third Friday.
It'll be the 15th.
It'll be the 15th, yeah.
Which is this Friday, Bob.
Yep.
Maybe we need to, well, it might be hard to put it together then. Give me your number and I'll try and get back to you.
We sure appreciate it, Bob.
Okay, why don't you call Jim's cell phone?
One moment. 8204.
But we're here all the time. I'm e-teaching.
Could I ask you what your address is?
2708 Roslin Trail.
That shows on the permit log it was approved.
Okay. Yay.
Oh, so then.
2708 Roslin.
Pardon me?
Was approved on March, it says.
We lost some of that.
Okay, we can't hear that. What?
2708 Roslin?
Yes.
It says your permit was approved on March 20th.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, well, we.
So we should be digging.
Yeah, you know, check with our building commissioner, building inspector, just to be sure.
Is that is that Louis?
That'd be Lou, yeah.
Yeah, Louis said it wasn't through. That's why.
That's why, because I'm thinking it wasn't approved. So let's let's find out. But we'll try and set up a meeting and we'll let you know. So so don't don't take it as guaranteed that it's approved, because I'm thinking it wasn't, but I don't know for sure. So we'll get it squared away for you.
Okay.
Number 41.
Okay.
What'd you say, Deanna?
I'm sorry, it just shows number 41 on the log.
Permit number 41?
Number permit number 41.
It's in the record somewhere.
I'll check with that and we'll see if we find out. But I will get back to you, okay?
Thank you.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? I'm not seeing any raised raised hands. Is anybody else seeing any?
No.
And again, I think it might, oh, no, here we go. I got some here. Brock at 327. Brock, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Hey, Bob, it's Mary O'Neill, 15 Lake Shore Drive. Just wanted to ask real quick, I hear they, you know, the sewers are going forth, or so we think. So is this going ahead regardless of whether there's a public hearing? Does John, do you have any knowledge of that, Coker, or?
Yeah, so I announced earlier that there will be a public hearing that the Michigan City Cemetery District will be in charge of. Everything else has been sent down to Indianapolis, and it'll be a it'll, yes, there will be a public hearing whenever they can put it together.
But, okay, but is it a go whether they can do that or not, depending upon, you know, quarantine, whatever conditions, since it went down to the state? Is it it does it sound like it's pretty much a go?
It sounds like it's a go, yes. Is Joyce still on? Joyce been?
John, no, I'm still here.
Because I'll look again on the website. When I last I looked, it was.
Joyce here. Joyce right there.
Still here, yeah.
Hi, Joy.
Hi, Mary. As as far as I know, yeah, they're not, they're moving forward. The people with the SRF loan and IDAM are reviewing the project, and they think we'll be approved for the loan in July. And everything's moving forward, so I would say, yes, it's a go.
Okay. And so we'll get finalized information on all that?
For the public hearing is that's really what they hold the public hearing for, is to give you the finalized information on how the project is going to go.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then my other question was, John Wall spoke early on about, I believe, getting drawings or something for the firehouse and whatnot. Any more information on that?
Yeah, Mary, it's a process. We've got one quote in for a design build from a design build contractor. We're going to get another quote, so we've got some comparable numbers. So that's where we're at right now, just moving forward with that second design build quote, so we can get some, you know, some harder numbers.
Okay, and then based upon numbers, we would go for bond issue or how are we looking at this considering, you know, finances in the future for the town? Any any thoughts to that?
We looked at bonding it, and the bonding companies basically said that the the threshold that we were at, you know, roughly something less than $1 million or right around there was too small that the bond and actual the transaction cost for a bond issue would be kind of prohibitive at that point. They we actually had some discussions with local bankers, and they say that that's the the most logical way. It's similar in terms of the financial impact. You know, the payments would be stretched out over the same sort of a timeframe, but it's really not, it doesn't rise to the level of a bond in terms of its magnitude.
Okay, so until you have some more numbers, there's no decisions made going forth or any of that at this time?
Well, just like any other major expenditure, yeah, it has to come before the board or the town council. Has to be the fire commission would have to present it to the town council, and then the town council would have to move forward, and then there'd be the commensurate hearings and so forth like on any other expenditure.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, other comments. I'm looking for the raised thumb. Kelly Coyle, you are unmuted.
Thank you. 2013 Melrose Drive. One of the things that I've been thinking about quite a bit, because I walk in the morning most of the time, is the number of walkers, runners, and cyclists lately, especially a lot of people trying to get out of their houses just for a break because of COVID. What I realize is there are times when I am walking against traffic, I have someone walking with their back to traffic. Has Long Beach thought about putting down the same type of signs that are in Sheridan and Michigan City on the roadway so that people know which way to walk and which way cyclists should ride? But also also thinking about maybe courtesy signs to remind people to keep six feet social distance. I've had a lot of runners run up very close to me or on top of me before I know they're there because they're actually, again, right behind me, and I don't know that they're right behind me. And so, you know, just public concern. So looking at like courtesy signs or reminders, how people can actually walk on the street going against traffic the way they're supposed to.
Now, certainly any signage on Lake Shore Drive needs to wait until, or signage at least on the street, needs to wait until after the sewer is done, because we wouldn't want to paint it and then tear it up.
Correct.
Keith, any thoughts about signage down there as far as reminding people which side of the road they're supposed to be walking on?
When we come across and we advise them that walkers and joggers are supposed to go against traffic and bicyclists go with the flow of traffic. We do stop and remind people as they do it.
Is there an opportunity maybe during this time, if you can't put it on the street, just to do courtesy signs to remind people of social distancing? You know, it doesn't look like COVID is going to go away anytime soon. It might lessen, it might not, but maybe only reminders?
I don't think signage is going to do any good. The people that that you see walking, the two and the four of us, are all living in the same household. So I don't know what the answer is for that.
Yeah, this is Nick. I mean, we could certainly, you know, we've got the utilization of the town email that has probably, again, five, 600, almost 700 names of residents in the town. I mean, at least from a inside of Long Beach, we can we can certainly do our best to promote, continue promoting that message for those that traverse in and out of the the town limits from outside of other cities. That might be more problematic, but we can certainly certainly add that to communication that goes out to residents.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Any others? Let's see. I don't see any others, so I think we've done done all the public comments. Well, given that that's done, council comments, any council comments? Cool. Claims approval. Bill?
Check number 17193 through number 17235 totaling $215,164.66 salaries for April 2020 were $54,929.74.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
I make the motion to adjourn, says Nick.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll sneak a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, thanks.